Well, good morning. Today with the invocation, I'd like to share something that I read each morning. It's out of a little devotional. And it's written in the first person. So Jesus is talking to the reader, if you can imagine that. But I think it goes right along with what my prayer would be today. "Come to me and rest in my loving presence. You know that this day will bring difficulties, and you're trying to think your way through those trials. As you anticipate what is ahead of you, you forget that I'm with you now and always. Rehearsing your troubles results in experiencing them many times, whereas you are meant to go through them only when they actually occur. Do not multiply your suffering in this way. Instead, come to me and relax in my peace. I will strengthen you and prepare you for this day, transforming your fear into confident trust." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for Jesus. We thank you for your word. We thank you for your love. Each day, it seems like we take on the responsibilities that's really yours as we try to figure things out and do things in our own way. Help us to always remember that you're with us, that you care about us and you love us, that those things that we face, we're not facing alone. This day is no different than that. Thank you for the health, the prosperity, the peace, the guidance that comes from heaven. We give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Call this meeting of Fayette County Board of Commissioners to order to withstand the pledge for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move the minutes.
I'll move the minutes for the last meeting. Second.
Then move the seconds, move the minutes from the last meeting. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Community Corrections, Michelle Dudley. She's here. Michelle's not here.
She's coming. I just, I just phoned her on the phone. She's trying to put together a formal letter to the county.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll go ahead. Kathy Rhodes.
I'm here this morning. We have, we put bids out for a contract for the 2022 cyclical reassessment, annual adjustment. And we had three bids that came in. And this morning, I reviewed all the contracts, and this morning, I'm coming to make a recommendation that we accept the Advalorm bid for a contract.
All right. There are two people here from Advalorm?
Yes. This is Mr. Jay Morris. I don't know.
Kathy, if I may ask, is their bid different from Tyler's bid? Are they offering something different than Tyler wants to offer?
Well, that's why Mr. Morris came here from Kokomo this morning, if there were any questions. So if you'd like to have him answer some of your questions. As far as I know, we've had, I presented a letter to all of you, and we've had them since 2013.
And I appreciate that information.
They've done a really wonderful job. And Advalorm, I know we've had companies before, but even before I was even here, but they have a presence here in our county every day. They have Eric Johnson's, he's a data collector for Advalorm, and he's every day here, except unless he has to go to classes, or he has vacation, or sick days. But it's almost a four out of five day presence if you span it out over the year. Where the other, that Lex store, they don't even have a presence in Indiana yet. They're trying to get them to put in the door here in Indiana. And Tyler, you know, they kind of bring people in, do a job. So if we have any questions with Advalorm, there's somebody here all the time to answer our questions or do some kind of, sometimes we have some extra things that need to be reviewed. They do that. Like Eric, he'll go out again for us to look at something. And anytime we have to call the office, they're, they're right there in their office. So if you got any questions, I said for them, but we've been real pleased with their service and the people that we work with. They're very professional, very knowledgeable.
Through the bidding, I mean, through the bids that were submitted, Kathy, does Tyler, do they, are they going to provide someone to be here in the county the same, or as what we're currently?
In the contract, they did not have anybody specified to be the data collector for here. You know, I don't know. But Eric is here.
Yes.
I know Tyler has, they have people, you're talking to other counties, they have people that come in from Ohio, and they do some of the counties, or they have people here in Indiana that do some of the data collecting and the work. But they're, they're not, they're not a resident of that county. They're not here. They go home. And I say Eric's here, and he does the work. And as far as, we've never had Tyler doing any work for us. So I can't speak to who they might bring in. They did not give a name. They had that Bill Burkle's name as a project manager, and he's from Indianapolis. So he won't be here all the time. And they usually, I don't know, but they usually, we had experience, talked to counties, but...
My understanding in talking to other counties is they normally bring in three or four people for a short period of time, go through and knock that out, and then they're gone and move on to another county and do the same thing. And it may not always be the same people that come back. And so they don't get familiarized with your county as well as we feel by having somebody on staff that's basically in the county all the time. They're, they're a lot more familiar with the county and know what was picked up last year versus this year to make sure nothing's been missed.
Okay.
And we have never, ever had anybody go as many places as Eric has gone. He has gone, like you live in the county, so you know, with some of those, Park Drive, Columbia, and Orange. He has trekked over here a little down. He has found more structures and buildings that have not been assessed. And he just, he doesn't give up until he just searches all the...
Do you plan on, with this new contract, continuing having someone, Eric or someone else, present throughout the contract terms? Okay.
Yes, our, our goal is a little bit different than some of the other companies in the way they run it, because that's exactly how we designed our platform, if you want to call it that. Is we, in all of the counties that we currently operate in, we hire somebody within that county that knows the county, and then they stay in that county. I know I've worked personally, I've been doing this since 1988, and I've worked for three different companies. And these other companies, Tyler being one of them, I didn't work exactly for Tyler. They're under a different name at that point. But at any rate, they, they tend to just send people all over the place. Even Bill Burkle that she's referencing has done work up in Detroit, Michigan, as much as two years ago. So they just send people wherever it is that they're needed. And our goal was to have somebody that is Fayette County. And then they have the support staff behind that. He's the actual point person, I guess if you want to call it that, doing the actual field collection. But then we have the support staff behind that that does the commercial and industrial type of properties, that does the trending that has to be done, the annual adjustments that have to be done, setting of land values that has to be done. All of that is over, above just the general, the individual that goes out and does the actual field work. So, so yes, our anticipation is that...
To maintain.
We will continue that same process.
Okay, I have more questions. Madam President, I'd make a motion that we approve Kathy's recommendation due to the fact that the lower bid, Tyler, is not guaranteeing us to have a person available throughout the contract period here in the county. I think that would be qualified to take the best...
Most of that, so best material requirements.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that motion.
This moves the second, except Advalorm's bid, because of the fact that we will have a continued presence in the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you so much. Mr. Collins has the contract that you'll need to sign, and then we send it to the DODF, and they'll send it back.
Thank you for all the information. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Dudley?
Michelle, I want to make a...
I just printed the totals, paid for it.
Thank you.
There's something Michael can fix out. It won't open up on my computer. He has to come. It's something with DMC.
Okay. I thought maybe it was mine.
No, it's working.
He didn't use the warm up, open up. Get all the...
I am here to ask for approval to apply for the Community Corrections Grant. Basically, I'm asking for the same amount from the state as last year on base fund, which is $435,764. And I'm asking for a $61,500 increase on the 1006 funds, which would be to hire one new full-time staff. Our caseload has about doubled. We're up to 100 electronic bracelets out a day. And with the addition of drug court, if it gets approved through the grant process, that's going to greatly increase our CBTs and our drug testing for the week. So I'm asking for a total of, from the state funds, of $742,864. And I have increased my project income requests through them also to cover the increase in offenders that we're serving to pay for the drugs, additional drug screens, and the electronic monitoring. So mine is the same. And on the jail treatment, I'm asking for the same amount that we were awarded last year, which is $176,500. And I think just...
Yeah, basically, I just gave you the probation portion. I'm not asking for anything new in this grant period. I'm also asking for what was awarded last year and the year before, which was for two probation officers and administrative assistant. And I don't, the total funding is $169,696.34. So I don't know if my, it was $167,700 last year, but I added more for insurance. So I don't know if that needs to be adjusted, but basically, I'm asking for the same thing that I have the last two years to continue doing what, basically, what we're working with now.
So, Jen, this, this pays for two salaries for probation?
This pays for two salary and for two probation officers, and then there's an administrative assistant.
Okay, okay.
So that's for all three of those.
Now, is this, is this, when you received this grant, was it last year, the first time, or?
We actually received the administrative assistant the fiscal year 2016, and then the fiscal year, and they're in a different cycle. The 2017 is when I got the two probation officers. And I didn't ask for anything additional last year or this year. I'm asking to keep it the same.
So are those two additional officers?
Yes.
Added to the staff?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes. It helps tremendously to kind of divvy up the workload measure. We were so overwhelmed, there was no way we could supervise the way we're supposed to.
Adult probation officers?
Yes, they're, I call them felony probation officers, mainly give them felony cases.
Okay.
Just to chime in and support probation, Paul Free, Superior Court Judge. What she got wasn't half enough, but it certainly was a help. I mean, I don't know if people realize how grossly understaffed probation. I assume you do, because we don't miss an opportunity to mention it every time we come over here relating to probation. But the two, it's not like that solved the problem. It just made it slightly less worse.
Yeah.
Not as worse, rather. So unlike the other two, I'm the first time applicant on this 1006 money that they're seeking, and I'm seeking for drug courts. So I would just have one person, that was a full-time employee, that'd be the drug court coordinator. And I'm asking for their cap, which is, ends up being about $68,000 with benefits. You know, it's $35,000 in salary, but you know how that goes. It's almost, it's almost double that by the time you get the benefits. And then to save some money, what I planned on doing as far as administrative support for that person, secretarial support and other things, instead of asking for a separate secretary for that person, which they'll need some clerical support for sure, is just to ask for some overtime for my existing court staff personnel, because the drug court operation is a 24/7, 365 operation. So there'll be all kinds of requests for assistance needed after regular business hours. So, and my staff is happy to do that, because again, another thing I don't miss an opportunity to tell you is court staff isn't paid nearly enough. That's why they leave on about every 69 months. So maybe if we could give them some overtime, that would help them out. And at the same time, it saves the state money. We're economizing on what we're asking for in the grant, because you don't have to pay any extra benefits, you see. So I think it's a win-win type situation. So we're going to be asking for some overtime for my three full-time court staff employees to kind of team, in a team way, support the drug court coordinator, making calls, and then all just standard clerical stuff as well. Then there's a, then there's a number of things. We don't have some exact quotes yet, so I'm going to have to tack that down. If you get an exact quote on a bulletproof vest, just emphasize, you know, this is a dangerous thing. They'll be going out, just as probation officers do, doing site visits and things like that. They'll need a gun, a bulletproof vest, and a portable breath test to check people to see if they've been drinking when they come in, or when they go check on them, things like that. So we'll have to get some precise quotes on that. But we have some pretty good estimates, and that's what's reflected in the letter. Yeah. So it may deviate from that just a little bit, just a little bit based on exact quotes. It's not, the grant application is not due until the end of the month. We're here today, of course, just out of convenience, since this is the last meeting of the month. Now, I know in the past, I don't know how you all feel about this, different personalities, different folks from when it was. When I was in the prosecutor's office years ago, we had a stop grant for domestic violence that funded about a third of the deputy prosecutor's salary. And I used to write that grant every year. And sometimes, we weren't sure what insurance costs were going to be based on, you know, the quotes that were coming in from the county and stuff like that. So you would vote that you've got the general outline, and we're certain that it's not going to cost the county any more than X, which is zero in this case. But if it deviated from what we quoted you there in the items a little bit, because if I find out the vest costs $50 more than what we thought it was going to cost or something, we could just go to, if you wanted to take a vote, the president would have the authority to sign off on the certification letter for the application, which we will need before we submit it. Otherwise, the only other alternative would be to call a special meeting by the end of the month. That seems unnecessary for the trivial deviations. But that's a few, obviously. That's why you guys are elected by the people to make those decisions. So that's what I would suggest. I know that's been done in the past for state grants, and it hasn't been a problem. Any questions for me?
How are things going with your drug court application?
Well, pretty good. I think we've got it tied down. I'd say all the written, the hard part, the hard part is done, really, the narratives and all that.
Okay.
I think it's pretty good. We had a meeting with all the stakeholders last week. Michelle shares that. And by the way, I just want to publicly thank Michelle for running the point on this. She's just done an incredible amount of work above and beyond her normal daily duties. And I think that was productive. We got some good suggestions out of that, and modified some things over the weekend even. So I think, I think it's going, it's going well. There's another track here for actual certification from the Supreme Court. They don't actually control the grant money, as you know. DOC controls the grant money. But with regard to my particular part of the grant, it's, Supreme Court runs a certification procedure for drug courts, and that's going to require a site visit from the bureaucrat evaluators at Indianapolis at some point this spring. I was just on the phone with them again this morning before I came to the meeting. Probably be in the April/May timeframe, they'll come down and we'll kind of do a mock run through. This is, of course, before any participants have arrived. The actual money won't arrive till July 1st, assuming we get it. And so obviously, we won't begin taking any people into the program until then, because I can't hire the coordinator until I have the money. And you can't have a participant in drug court without someone watching them. That's the whole point of the court, so. But they will come down and sort of, you might say, do a mock-up of what you're going to do. You need to have, which I already have, my whole, what they call the drug court advisory board in place. These two are on that board. And there'll be a meeting with me once a week, along with drug court coordinator and the sheriff, and Meridian Health Services representative, and a few others, to evaluate each and every person that's in the drug court every single week. Drug court coordinator will write a formal report about just what's happened to that individual since the last time we met, which was just last week. And that's how specific and detailed we're going to get on these people. As I told you, the whole point of the program is you've got to be on them like a wet blanket. I mean, that's, that's the way to do it. So nothing is left to guesswork or anything. We meet once a week. Drug court coordinators having numerous, numerous contacts with every single person in the drug court every week. At the beginning, probably every day. Not to mention the fact that they're going to be under supervision in the first phase of the program and the second phase of the program with Community Corrections, respectively on work release the first six months, and then move on to home detention the second six months. And then even in the third phase, they may be on day reporting, which will also be supervised through Community Corrections as well. We'll have a minimum of three drug tests a week for every participant, minimum three drug tests a week for every participant. So it's going to be very hard to get away with anything. Very hard.
Thank you.
Not to say that we won't catch them. And what you do then, when you catch them, is that's where it gets hard, all right, you understand? But the odds of them actually getting away with it for an extended period of time are very low. You're going to catch them when you put that kind of pressure on them. But then what do you do about that? What kind of corrective measures do you take? There's a whole system of that. It's something of an art more than a science, I guess you would say, of trying to...
So it's not an automatic?
Not an automatic kick out from the program, depending on how severe it is, of course. I mean, you know, some people, it's not a one and done. It's not a one and done type program. We have that program already.
Yeah.
Okay? That's what the regular criminal justice system is. You know, you get prosecuted, and you take, you take your lick, and that's it, you know? So we're going to try to work with these people and get them in, get them in shape. That's the whole point of the program, is something totally different than what we do now. We'll see.
Thank you.
I don't know. Other people are having some success with it. It's been around quite some time, especially when you talk about out-of-state programs. It started in California. There's about a 20-year history of this in this country. It's not, it's not really what you would call a new thing on the horizon. But I'm optimistic but realistic as well. And as I've said earlier, I think I said before this body once before, and I just want to reiterate, and for the benefit of the public as well, if the program works perfectly, again, if the program works perfectly, and we have results which match the best possible results reported anywhere in the country as far as percentage of success rate, we will effectively get 20 people a year off of, off of the drugs and back into productive society. That sounds good, except for, as I've said before, not in light of the fact that 20 people a weekend start using drugs presently. I'm making that number up. I don't have any stats for that. But you know as well as I, with the increase in drug use around here, fixing them at 20 a year is not going to drag the problem down to a cure. So I get some of these grocery store backslaps and congratulatory comments from the public about, you know, well, you're really going to get this community under control with this drug court thing, you know? It's a good thing. I wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't. It's a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of extra work for me for no extra compensation, which is fine with me. But I don't want people to have a false hope, you know, two years from now.
That's a miracle.
There's some miracle cure, okay? It's not. And I tell people that, too. I've had a guy come up and put his hand around my neck at Kroger and say, wow, I'm so happy, I'm so proud of you for starting this. This is really going to get this under control. And I'm just like, well, hold up now. It is a good thing. I am too glad we're doing it. And it's going to be some sort of incremental help. But it's almost more of a symbol than it is a cure, a symbol of hope for people who have made the decision that they really want to quit. And this is us putting out the hand of friendship instead of the fist. This is my, you know, if I had a, if I had a logo for the program, this would be it. You can have this one or this one, whichever you want. For those of you who choose this one, we're going to, we're going to try to help you. But I don't want it to be misunderstood. The real solution is we have to, I mean, everybody in the system knows, the real solution is we have to do more to prevent initial addiction. That's really, that's really the solution. We have to reduce the amount of people who are at first beginning to use illicit drugs. If we don't do that, we'll never get all the way on top of this problem. We can't cure them as fast as they can start being addicted.
Yeah.
Those numbers don't match up.
No, they don't.
So that's where we're at on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking this on, Paul.
Good morning. Under the same program that's allowing the possibility of drug court in communities such as ours, there's also a felony diversion program. Felony diversion is something that's a little bit new to Indiana. A little bit new, meaning that, you know, most law is hundreds of years old. We've only had the ability to do diversions on felonies for just a handful of years. Usually, when we did diversions, it had to be a misdemeanor. Sometimes we would get creative if we felt someone really deserved it, and we would amend down or make it a lesser included, and let them do a diversion. A diversion allows someone to not have a conviction on their record. You pay a fee, you stay out of trouble for a certain amount of time. Ours is six months or a year, whichever we choose. Excuse me. It's cold weather's getting me. And then that is simply a dismissal instead of a conviction on a person's record. Usually, we were talking about misdemeanors. That's almost a whole different purpose of our program. Now that the legislature has opened up the possibility of felony diversions, and we can actually even divert Level Fives, which are not the basic felony. So Fives and Sixes are now eligible for diversion. And what that does is it keeps people in our community from having a felony conviction that can affect their employment record, is the biggest, is probably the biggest impact that we see locally. And it kind of goes hand in hand with drug court, but would be open to people who have crimes that aren't drug-based. In particular, maybe a non-support or... In particular, maybe a non-support or even something like a theft or a credit card fraud. You would still pay a fee. You would... And we can do this now without these grant funds. These grant funds would allow us to have a prosecutor dedicated, part-time, not full-time. It'd be maybe 25% of their time to dealing with felony diversions. And they would be required to also do programs. They would be programs that would be somewhat like programs in the drug court. We could send them... We would have to send them to Thinking for a Change with community corrections and any other program that we thought was helpful. Maybe the...
Criminal Addictive.
Criminal Addictive Thinking, the Parenthood classes, anything to try to get them back to being productive rather than in their criminal thinking. So we are going to... We would like to ask, we would like to have your blessing, to ask for... The cap is $35,000 on the salary. Frankly, I'd like to ask for $35,000 because I remember from my law school days that when you ask, you know, you always go big. You always ask for... If they gave us 35, that'd be great. We would also be... We're allowed to ask for the benefits to cover that as well. And that would be calculated out. And then maybe $3,000 to $5,000 for drug testing kits, to pay for that, because our program would be independent of other programs, and we don't want to rely on... We want to be able to self-sustain this program in terms of they pay a one-time fee, they're assessed, they're given their conditions, and then they have to follow through with those, including submitting to testing if requested, in order to earn their dismissal rather than conviction at the end of the diversion period, which would be a year in these cases, because I think research shows that six months isn't enough to really change someone's mindset. So we would like to do that as well. I apologize for not having something written to present to you. This is something that, for whatever reason, I just didn't realize was available and that it was initiated the way they send these grant notices out. It looks like it's all for drug court, and then buried in there is this thing about felony diversion. And I think we may as well be taking advantage of it if we can get a piece of it, because making this community more drug-free, somewhat drug-free, making this community drug-free and employable should be the main goal of this team here that we have. Thank you.
So Betty's grant will also be 100% funded, or is there match monies?
It'd be all grant-funded, I believe, and possibly out of her project income.
Okay.
I think the whole thing is everybody's. None of the four of us... We have to submit this together. It's a single application.
Right.
Four parts.
Okay.
But none of it requires any matching.
There's no local funds?
Well, one of his sheets... Michelle, yours...
On the base.
It has County General 20,000.
That's what has been there since it began.
That is the match.
Yes.
Yes.
That's been there since the beginning, and that's for utilities. And we usually don't use all of that.
Right. Yeah.
So I would just need a motion that the four of us could...
Proceed on with that.
Proceed with the submission, and then I'll get the letter typed up and get it to Jane for...
The President to sign.
Yeah.
It's the only one that needs to sign it, isn't it?
That's correct.
I'd make a motion, Madam President, that we allow this team to proceed on with the application process and that we give you the authority to sign the necessary paperwork.
I'll just take that.
It's been moved in seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Gary, I have a printout. Do you want to copy it?
No, that's all right. If Michael figures it out, Michelle, resend it to me, and I'll just open it up on the laptop.
He should be able to open it as soon as he gets his magic on there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Michelle, I will need a final copy once it's all done.
Okay.
Thank you. Is Michael sitting back there someplace?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now, in comparison to the last set of numbers you got, my stuff's pretty small. The copier over at the jail has completely given up the ghost beyond resurrection. No necromancy will bring that one back again. So I've gotten some quotes. I've got Toshiba coming today to give me some quotes, and I'm waiting to hear back from my office shop. But the quotes that I've gotten from Rico, it's basically the same machine as what we just got from the Recorder's Office, and it's running around $3,000 for the quote and then $500 for a finisher. I'm just giving you rough numbers, because until I get the other quotes to compare against, that's kind of a, you know, just kind of a rough number. Also, the copier in the Clerk's Office, we had a three-year lease on that that actually ended in December, which is what I found out yesterday in a meeting. Yeah, I worked yesterday, unlike all you lazy people.
I worked all day.
Anyway, he told me that our lease was up at the end of last month. What we need to do is get another quote. Now, he gave me a quote for them, but I wasn't sure, since it was a previous lease, if we need to get three competitive quotes. I'm fine with that. I just wasn't sure how that worked out.
Are we going to continue a lease program?
Most of the leases, like the lease we had, are looking at possibly for the jail as a $1 buyout at the end, if we want to buy the machine for a dollar. This one, we did not do that for some reason. I don't know if I just missed it on the paperwork or if everybody that looked at the paperwork missed it, because, you know, obviously, every commissioner's looked at it, too. But we just didn't see it. So it's a fair market buyout for the lease that we've got now. So if we want to keep that machine, it's like $3,000. And for getting a new machine, you know, it was... Let me see if I've got it here. Basically comparable machine to what we've got now, we're looking at about $213 a month for the lease. So I just need to know if I need to get comparable quotes from other vendors, and I'm fine with that. I just, like I said, I just found out yesterday. So...
I think we should, shouldn't we?
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
Just to keep them honest.
Yeah. We got the new imagery from the state, and I'm putting that on the computers that use WTH. It'll probably be two to three weeks before that's up on both Schneider and WTH website, but that will give us the newest imagery for the flyer that they just did sometime this last fall. So... And that's about all I've got for the moment. Anything for me? Now, on the grant form, were you trying to open it directly from your email?
Download.
You have to download it and then open it in Acrobat or some other program. You can't open it directly from the email.
Okay.
It's just the way that they're... They make this spiffly little pretty PDF that we've had to spend so much time fighting with. Michelle had everything in there, had a bunch of stuff in there, and then she had to retype it when they gave her a new version. Then they gave her yet another new version that was buggy, and I retyped it. And then they came out another week later and said, "Well, here's an Excel version in case you're still having problems." So they do this every year with that same grant. They can't seem to get their act together. So...
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Though I do have... Here's a copy that I printed off for Mark. If you want to go ahead and send it.
Do you have final bids on those copiers, or...
No, I'm... That's just that I've only gotten the one. I've got a meeting today with Toshiba for the jail to get their quote, and I'm waiting for one more, and then I'll get two more quotes on the other one.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any mail?
No. Adrian's back there for Title VI.
Okay. He is not on...
He is not on.
Adrian?
Yes.
Do you have the Title VI?
Yes, DLZ has completed the plan. And the next step is to be accepted by you. It's fairly standard. There's nothing shaking about it, and they've submitted their latest claim. I skimmed through it. I don't see anything waving a flag. The content is pretty straightforward. Things that are pretty parallel to the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan that we have. So I would say it's in your hands now to accept or deny.
I would make a motion that we accept this plan, nondiscrimination plan prepared by DLZ. I'll stick with Lucian.
It's been moved in seconds. It's a week's that nondiscrimination plan from DIC on the Title VI program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Is there actually signature pages?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll have to sign as the attorney and Cori.
Thank you, Adrian. I appreciate your time with that.
And I have their latest claim.
You have the invoice. Okay. I think you can turn that into a document.
That... The only thing I have other than that is a conversation I have with Gary about funding issues I'm running into for my office. I have exhausted all the grant possibilities there. Diane, I can tell you, I've squeezed a grant so tight, there's nothing left in that thing. Our vehicle that needs repair, we have no funding to do that. And vehicle, I don't know where that's going to go, $100, $200, $300. And then looking at the county taking over one of my bills for Internet information that I'm getting, that's probably about $1,400 a year. I'm dropping with cost savings and reimbursements from Homeland Security. It's, right now, $18,000, I think was the last check you received, and the cost savings on the tower is about $20,000, so $46,000 a year. So the funding is being generated. And, believe it or not, things that happen outside of this state have an effect on me. The recent problem in Hawaii, I've got meetings coming up next week because of that. So... And I want to make David aware of that also, because basically that boils down to an ever-bridges-type system, and he needs to be aware of the consequences of that. So maybe we can have a further conversation after the meeting to kind of get into the details of those little things.
All right. We certainly don't want anybody jumping someplace thinking we're having an atomic warhead coming into Connerville.
I know that it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. I appreciate it.
Taking care of the family is...
Yeah, that's...
Is there any mail? Do we need to open those bids?
At a certain time, or...
There's advertised for mine. It's on the conference table. David called over to say that. I want people to help do that.
Okay. This is for the Sematary Commission. Dave, did you want to... This is for the mowing contracts. We have two bids. One from Rick's Lawn Care.
Yes. Rick's Lawn Care from Rochefell, Indiana. Their bid is for the total, the entire term of the contract, April 1st of '18 through October 31st of '18 is $61,600. And Cory's Lawn Care and Snow Removal from Connersville, here in Connersville, their total bid is for $22,500. I'd make a motion that we take these under advisement and let the Sematary Commission look at them and make sure that they meet the needs.
I'm pretty sure everybody on the commission could do math.
But we want to make sure that it's covering what you want them to cover. I'll take the motion.
Okay. We'll take these under advisement. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll let the Sematary Commission look at these and make sure they are going to take care of what we need to... Board appointments?
Madam President, I worked on this quite a bit this week, this last week, trying to encourage some new interested people. And I come up with a couple of the boards so far that... For the Tourism Board, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lindsey Brooks and Amanda Stevens to those two positions that we have open. They're two-year terms. I'll take the motion.
Been moved in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
To appoint Lindsey Brooks and Amanda Stevens to the board?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Lindsey is a new to government board, so to speak. She's a schoolteacher out here to... Or down here at the middle school, right, mine? And she's very much interested in getting involved in the community and helping with the community, and I think this is a good opportunity to let her get her feet wet, so to speak. And we... She also come with recommendations. And she come with some recommendations from other people that's been involved with some of the other boards in the past. So I hope that she enjoys her time on the Tourism Board, and I hope she's very productive with it. Amanda, we're re-upping her. She is a member of the board due to her being the manager of the Woodridge.
Yes. It's kind of a mandatory position.
If they're possible, yeah.
If it's possible, you have to have somebody from those facilities that are donating, because it's taxes from the motel, that it's a visitation tourism tax that they pay, and they have to have a say in how we spend the money.
And then our citizen appointment to the Economic Development Board, I'd like to make a motion that we put Barton Barker on that board. He has a... He has experience, but yet he's been off of it for a while, and, and maybe a little bit of a new look to that board. I'll second the motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Barton Barker, for economic development. Now, that's not the EDG, right?
I'm sorry?
That's not the EDG. That's a different one.
Well, I, I've been told that it, that Melissa was on the EDG. She was our appointment.
Okay, they replaced Melissa?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And then we had, we had a, a couple of people that spoke of interest in the BZA And I'd like to make a motion to ask, appoint Jeff Fisher to that board. He is a local contractor here, and he's experienced with those kind of issues, and he's, he's young and hasn't been involved in any government agencies of the past, and so he'll be totally new blood to that. I'll second the motion.
Been moved in second to appoint Jeff Fisher to the BZA board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That's all that I've been able to fill. We are fine so far. We've, we've still got the Fayette County Health Board, and I still have questions to Paula. I didn't have time to get ahold of Paula. But I, I'd just like to know if that has to be a school nurse, or whether it just needs to be a nurse period for that position? And also the cemetery board, we're still looking for volunteers to take that, that, those two positions. We have two openings on that board. I, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone that has served on these boards in the past. We appreciate their time and their effort. It's, it's not a five minutes and you're out type needs, and they put a lot of time into it, and we just appreciate all their time that they do put into it. I think it's...
All right. That's it?
Unless you guys have some, somebody for cemetery board, but I don't think we do yet.
No, we have a gentleman. Has Mr. Hughes said whether he would serve yet or not, Dale?
I'm sorry?
David? Has Mr. Hughes, who's come to our meeting several times, says he's...
Last I knew, he, he wanted to remain on the side. But they had another person, I thought, had said she would be on, and they would take four.
Yes, I saw where Melissa and Amy said they had somebody they wanted to recommend, but they have not notified us to who it is.
Okay.
I know that they lost their father, and I'd like to extend sympathy to them, that that was kind of a shock, I think.
Yeah. So, I, I think the next meeting will be the first Monday of February. That should, then they can go and find.
Okay.
Do they still, does the cemetery board still meet in the mornings?
Yes, 9:00 AM, first Monday of the month.
Okay. I know that's been a, a problem with some, some of the people I've talked to, that they're, they're still working, and, and they're not retired people that are interested in the cemetery board, but they just can't get off work to meet in the mornings, so...
I'll make sure they know that.
So, that, you might, might pass that on to them. But if they consider maybe changing that to an evening meeting or something.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That's all the old business. New business, Mary Soliday, Westport Wind.
Yeah, I'm going to go first.
Okay. Zach Melvin.
Good morning. Zach Melvin, Next Era Energy, and I hope everybody had a great holiday season, and I'm happy to be back up here talking about our project moving forward with the Westport Wind project and the transmission design concept that we are contemplating now. I know that we have a road use agreement with the county that lets us put transmission lines in the right-of-way, and so I wanted to come in this morning and just talk with you about the concept that we're looking at for the transmission line in the right-of-way. And I've prepared some exhibits. Jane, can you pass those around?
I think I might give you a little extra. So, the line will start down the, the southern part of the county on West County Road 300 North, and then it'll travel south on County Road 750 West, and then it will come back to the east on West County Road 50 West to an interconnection point which will connect our project to the existing transmission grid. This is American Electric Power's transmission grid that we're connecting into. Just some specs on the line itself. Again, we're going to utilize the existing right-of-way, put it as far back in the right-of-way as we can. We're going to work with everybody here to make sure that you've got enough space. We're not encroaching on any existing utilities, and if we are, then we can relocate those or, or move our system however it needs to. Kind of the total projected that we're looking at putting into the right-of-way is approximately 3.7 miles, and then there'll be another 4.2, or about a half mile on private land. So, we already had that land under agreement for the private property. It'll be about 70 to 75 poles. Once we finalize the design, we'll have a final number for that. It will be a 138 kilovolt transmission line. Now, these are typically between 90 and 110 feet tall. It'll be galvanite steel. These will be reviewed by the IURC. The independent service operator at DJM will review these. AEP will also be reviewing this design. Then you can see on the last couple of pages, we do have a couple of specs, because this is not our first project. We've done quite a few of these, 110 different projects throughout North America, so this is not foreign to us. So, under the, the current road use agreement, we'd like to utilize that, that agreement that we have with you to keep this project moving forward and moving into coming in and getting permits spring or summer of this year. With that, Mary, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yes, a couple things.
Yeah, thanks, Zach. Mary Soliday, good morning. Just wanted to mention, just from a legal perspective on this, a couple of things. Zach and I spoke to Mr. Judd and Bill McDaniel to talk about what does this mean in terms of any certain land use approval? And what we talked to Bill and commented about is the fact that if you look at your ordinance, a wet project does not include transmission lines definitionally. So, we believe that Bill can, as plan director, approve this as part of the permitting that we obtain later this year. That would, of course, also be based on the road use agreement provisions, which allow these poles to be placed in the right-of-way. We know that we need to be reaching out to the surveyor, I don't know if he's here today, to go to the drainage board. We'll do that later this year in terms of that presentation. And also, the road use agreement does reference a master plan showing these poles and lines, and that will be presented to the county engineer and the county highway superintendent. So, Zach and I are just working on a calendar of activities and, you know, again, look forward to moving forward this year.
I'm glad that it's moving forward, or something's being done anyway. I'm already dealing on this project, and, because this project leaves us in limbo for a lot of things, whether it's going to go through or not. And so, I'm glad to hear from you today, and I appreciate this. As you said, then this will go through the proper permit process, and we'll move forward like that then. Okay.
Before we leave, I just wanted to mention one thing about, there's a House bill that's being presented called House Bill 1338. Happens to be tomorrow. I just found out that it was going this weekend. And if you haven't read it or been made aware of it, there's some provisions in there about how county commissioners cast their votes with projects in the county, as well as there's some disclosure things in it. So, if you haven't read it, I would encourage you to, and reach out to your representative to, to voice your opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the bill that Tom Saunders has introduced?
Yes, ma'am.
Colin can probably talk on the next one.
Oh, appraisers for property purchase.
Colin, yeah.
Sure. So, before the county can purchase a property, the council's already passed a resolution basically saying that we're interested in purchasing a property, not that we're going to or anything like that, but it's the first step in purchasing a property by the county. Next step is for the purchasing body to appoint two appraisers. That way, we can get average property value. So, that's what we need today.
So, we will get both appraisers, or will...
Yes. Commissioners will.
Okay.
Now, if he has a suggestion for appraisers, there's no reason why he can't take his suggestion, but it's up to you to get appraisers, as long as they're qualified.
Well, I, I was able to find one so far, but...
Appraisers for commercial property are even far between.
Yeah. And it's very difficult for them to get an appraisal in Connerville anyway, as well, because businesses just don't, aren't moving, business property, or commercial properties. I know Harmer Appraisal Service in, up in Wayne County, they said that they could do one, and would be happy to help with it. They were involved with the appraisals for the Rush County with their jail project and whatnot, so they're familiar with municipal needs. As far as the second one, I'm sure Wayne County's got another one, but my research has found that Fayette County does not have an appraiser that can do, will do, commercial properties.
Yes, we've checked through that.
Yeah. So, if I'm wrong, please, someone come forward, if they're willing to, willing and can, can legally do a commercial property. Otherwise, we're probably going to be faced to go... How about Hager's? I hope it comes out of Richmond, I think. I'm just, your son looks like... Are they?
There's another, another one in Wayne County that somebody gave me the name of, I think, going to the Wayne County Commissioners, and I can't remember the name.
Okay. So, if someone wants to try to get that second one, I really appreciate it, but I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
I'll, I'll call Wayne County Commissioners and find out who the other appraiser is. Do you want to make a motion to go ahead and hire these appraisers?
Is that what we need, or do we need a resolution, or...
Yeah, if you can appoint somebody to, one of you to go out and pick them.
Okay.
I mean, however, you can make a motion to appoint the one you know now, that's fine too.
All right. I, I would make a motion that we ask Harmer Appraisal Service to get us an appraisal on that property, and then I would ask or allow us to try to find a, a second company to do that. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to hire two appraisers, one Mr. Harmer and whoever else we can find.
I would appoint them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
All right. I'll notify Mr. Harmer and let him know that we'd like for him to provide services for us.
Okay.
Do, do we have some kind of window of calendar, or...
Not as of right now.
Okay.
I talked to the owner of the property. Obviously, doesn't want to make this a whole year process, but I think if you, if we give him a timetable, he would appreciate it.
Great, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'll try to get that from Harmer to...
Okay.
So that we know how long he'll be in.
New business, get some board. Are there any patron concerns?
Can I ask him here?
No, you come up.
Craig Moss, Burke Posey Township, have two questions for Next Era. Is the electric sold yet? Power sold yet for the project? Is the project sold?
You made it.
That's up to you whether you want to answer that question or not.
Since you lost Rush County and Henry County, I'm sure that you have plans with Fayette County. It's a, it's a county-community outfit, so what's going on?
Well, I think we can say the zoning approval provided, it's either...
How many turbines?
I'm trying to answer that, sir. I think the, the approval was either 52 or 53. I don't have those notes with me.
It started out 43.
Well, then I...
72 turbines, 150 megawatt outfit.
Okay.
You lost some in Rush County, you lost some in Henry County.
Sir, I don't have my notes with me, so I'm not prepared to answer today.
You came for a meeting, you should have.
Well, they came, they came for a meeting with transmission lines.
I know that, but is the power sold? Why you put a transmission line up if the power's not sold? How many, how many turbines we going to get stuck with?
Exactly. Why put a transmission line up if the power's not sold?
Right. And how many turbines is Rush County going to get?
Evidently...
You're, you're the commissioners. How many turbines are we going to get?
Whatever's permitted.
It started out 43. The web page says up to 60.
Ask Bill McDaniel.
He won't say nothing.
How many are permitted?
Everybody's tight-lipped in this place. So, I'm just wanting to know if the power's sold, how many turbines in Fayette County? You can't answer that, you don't even know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Are there any other patron concerns? Approval of claims and payroll?
I'll move to approval and claims, second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We'll assign those after we adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Meeting of the county commissioners is adjourned. Thank you.